All right, I will call to order the meeting for the mayor and the board, Alderman, for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Before we adopt the agenda, we have several additions to the agenda. First addition is 4D, and we'll be appointing Corinne Jackson and Nicholas Brown to the Oxford Tourism Board. 4E, we consider approval of a light pole banner on University Avenue and West Jackson Avenue for Holly Jolly Holidays. For 7A, request permission to approve change order number five in the amount of $5,895.63 from JP Corp., General Contractors for the Developmental Services Building Remodel Project. 7B, request permission to approve change order number three in the amount of $5,580.22 for Century Construction for City Hall Renovation Project. 8G, consider request for asphalt stamping contract to work on Sunday, October the 19th and October the 26th for crosswalks around the square. And last is 8H, request permission to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for Pumpkin Water System Well Abandonment Project. I'll accept a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
All right, mayor's report. Mayor Tannehill is out of town this week, so I'm running the meeting for today. We wanted to just let you know that the Christmas lighting project has started. That is going, and our town will become what she likes to call the snow globe of the South here pretty soon. We don't know the date when those will be turned on, but we will push that out on social media when the time comes. Halloween this year is still October 31st, the same as it was last year, and the same it will be next year. So for those that are asking what the city is going to do on Halloween, we are planning to have it October 31st like every year. Also, Christmas will be December 25th as well. If you are wondering what's going on, if the neighborhoods, if y'all get together and decide when y'all want to do your trick or treating, and if you want us to push that out for y'all as well, just contact the mayor's office. We have made it through four home football games so far. We got our last, now we've got our last four coming up, starting this weekend, and then we have two weeks off, and then Halloween, and then South Carolina, and we'll start the three. So that's moving along, and I would say this, the police department, fire department have done an excellent job during those times. We appreciate y'all. All right, with that, I will move on to request permission to approve the minutes of the meeting, regular meeting on September 16th, 2025, and the recess meeting on October 1st, 2025.
Submit.
All in favor?
Aha.
Request permission to approve the accounts for all city departments.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
All right, request permission to approve municipal compliance questionnaire.
Yes, this is one of the things we have to do every year, and is required by state statute.
A motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to approve a list of budget amendments and reallocations for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Ashley?
Yes, one of our housekeeping items, we always amend our previous year to actual on some lines, so that's one of our lists that we will have ready for y'all.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry, I lost my d- oh, aha. What? Sorry, y'all, I apologize, my technology's not working, and I am, I'm just gonna forget it, and so I'm here in the moment. I tried. Thank you for paper over here.
There we go. All right, I'll ask that you consider the consent agenda.
Um, there was one more. 2E.
2E. Request permission to advertise for the bids for municipal depository services for the calendar year 2026 through 2029.
Submit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? All right, now I ask you to consider the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, request permission to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the fiscal year 2025, 2026, 5311 Rural Public Transit Grant for the OUT, Out University Transit System. Donna?
This is for the grant that's started on the 1st of October that we just got. I did send it over to Paul Watkins to look at. He is approved, so.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, request permission to advertise a reverse auction bid for approval of equipment in environmental services. Amber?
Hello, this is for three pieces of equipment, a knuckle boom truck, front end loader, and automated side loader, all budgeted.
A motion, and will we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Request permission to advertise for bids for the construction and installation of a synthetic liner for the proposed rubbish site expansion.
Yes, sir, our soil did not pass the test, so we get to buy a synthetic liner.
Awesome.
We're excited. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
And Amber, thank your people too for all their hard work here for this football season, move in, move out. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Request permission to approve a parade assembly permit for Stronger Together Oxford to host the annual Christmas parade on December 1st, 2025, from 6:30 PM.
Yes.
4D and 4.
Aha.
Yep, 4D and 4.
4D.
All right, excuse me, let me back up. I'm with Martha today, so, Mary Martha. Excuse me, 4D, which is appoint Corinne Jackson and Nicholas Brown to the Oxford University Transit, excuse me, Oxford Tourism Council.
We're gonna quit.
We are. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? 4E is considered the approval of a light pole banner on University Avenue and West Jackson Avenue for Holly Jolly Holidays. Nadia?
Yes, this is for the Holly Jolly Holidays light pole banners on University, West Jackson Avenue, beginning November 1st through the end of Holly Jolly in January.
Awesome.
Submit. Second?
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? All right, thank y'all.
Sorry.
All right, 5A is request permission to approve parade assembly permit for Stronger Together Oxford to host the annual Christmas parade on December 1st, 2025, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Chief?
Yes, sir, same route as each year, so we're good with it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, request permission to approve a parade assembly permit for proof media mix to host a promotional event on November 13th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Yes, sir, so Lieutenant Saban has worked with the organizers. It'll be essentially a pirate ship that we'll put on 10th Street, so that's really our easiest way to get it in, get it out, deal with pedestrian traffic, and not impede everything else corner around the square.
Okay.
You say pirate ship?
Captain Morgan Pirate Ship.
Oh.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Y'all good, like, yeah, it's good.
All right.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay.
They're not giving away alcohol, but like promotional items and things like that.
T-shirts, hats.
Okay.
All right.
They're not giving away alcohol.
They're not giving away alcohol.
Should we? I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. 5C is permission, or request permission to approve and authorize the mayor and chief of police to sign a service agreement with Language Line Services.
Yes, sir, so this allows us to do translation on the fly, so that we don't have to call an employee in or an officer in, then you're paying overtime. We found this company that will do it by the minute, and so it's 64 cents a minute, and there's no contract fees that you have to re-up every year, no service agreements. We use what we spend, and so it's real time, dispatch can log in, and it's up to 16 different languages, so it's a really good service.
Awesome.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? All right, first reading of the proposed ordinance amendment, chapter 102, Article 22, non-essential towing. Yeah, chief, this is you.
Yes, sir, so we made three modifications to our ordinance. If you look at 102-700, we're adding subsection 10, which just defines what towing equipment is. And then we also highlight that change in 102-707, we just add what that towing equipment definition is. And then in 102-707.3, we add, we changed that sentence to say the towing service may not block or immobilize in any way the requested vehicle to be towed. So essentially, what we're doing is we're, based off the complaints we have received since we started this, what we're seeing is businesses, if you call about four vehicles, and they all have to be independently called, they're being immobilized. So you pick up vehicle one, well, vehicles two, three, and four become immobilized if the owners can't remove them. Well, it's a parking issue, so if you towing a vehicle alleviates the other two, three, and four from having parking issues, then the problem has been alleviated. And so what's happening is you get vehicle one, you immobilize two, three, and four. Well, the owners are there, they're ready to get their vehicles, well, they've already connected to them, and again, that's not the spirit of the law, that's not how we wrote this originally, and we feel like we need to make those changes.
This is the first reading. We'll have a public hearing and read the next meeting. All right, see, next item is 6A, which is first reading of the proposed ordinance amendment for the zoning map case number 3256 by Blackburn Holdings LLC, rezoning of 64 acres to subdivision corridor, 85.5 acres to suburban multifamily, 122 acres to neighborhood residential, and 52 acres suburban residential east of Highway 7, north of Highway 30, and west of Charger Loop, being further identified as PPINs 3520, 3531, 4425, 4506, 4635. Ben, large piece of property, it's located in the northeast corner of the city limits right now, so it's just beyond northeast power. The property has some frontage towards Highway 7, it has frontage towards Highway 30, and it also has frontage towards Charger Lane, and Charger Lane is the property of the city limit line in that northeast corner as well. So about 324 acres. Currently, it's zoned suburban corridor, there's about 53 acres, neighborhood residential, about 99 acres, and 176 acres of suburban residential. The applicant appeared before the planning commission in both August, and that was tabled. They came back in September, where this was ultimately heard, and there's a recommendation from the planning commission we'll get to in a minute. The requests changed from when it came to the planning commission in August to when it went back in September, so there's some differences. So what are those differences? The applicants requesting 64 acres of the property be zoned suburban corridor, so it's a slight increase in suburban corridor from the way it's currently zoned. The majority of that increase, or that additional property is actually in the southern portion of the property, kind of goes behind where the Oxford School District, along Highway 30, where the Oxford School District has a piece of property, and I think Lily Cabota and Lily Feeden Ranch. There is an introduction of 85 and a half acres of suburban multifamily. The applicant believes that there should be a transition period between suburban corridor, should go to suburban multifamily as it transitions into neighborhood residential. A big increase of suburban, I'm sorry, of neighborhood residential, I say a big increase. It's about 30, roughly 30 acres or so, it's proposed at 123 acres of neighborhood residential, and then a large reduction in suburban residential to 52, just about 52 acres. So the applicant provided in their packet, and what you have before you, their justifications for the change in the character of the neighborhood and the public need. That was certainly discussed, and that was one of the main concerns when this actually appeared before the planning commission in August. There were concerns about the public need. And so when this came back in September, you'll see that there is considerable more data pertaining to that public need in your packet, and I'm sure that the applicant will certainly discuss that when they come for the public hearing. Also, at the September meeting, we did hear from a property owner. We did not hear from anybody at the first meeting, but we did hear from a property owner, Ms. Heather Tony, who does have property that's zoned suburban corridor and is immediately adjacent to this. And so she did, you know, she had some concerns and some questions and wanted some additional information, and she expressed her concerns about maybe this request being a bit premature, as even stated by the applicant, that they don't really have immediate plans to develop this property, that they were just starting that conversation. So she did seek some additional time for discussions with her, her neighbors, and the developer. There was a motion by one of the planning commissioners to table this item to allow for additional time for discussion. That motion actually failed in a three to three vote, so it was a tie, and so that motion failed. Subsequently, there was a motion to deny the request by Chairman Rigby, which was seconded by Commissioner Murphy, and that vote unanimously carried, so the requested rezoning comes before you with a denial recommendation by the planning commission. Okay. All right, so we'll have the public hearing and the next meeting. Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, 7A, which is request permission to approve change order number five in the amount of $5,895.63 from J Corp., General Contractors for Development Services Building Remodel Project. All us?
Yeah, this is for multiple items, and this will be a substantial completion of that building. We should wrap it up.
Perfect. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to approve change order number three in the amount of $5,580.22 for Century Construction for the City Hall Renovation Project.
Yeah, this is for a new electrical box on the third floor that will be compatible with the two new ones that they're installing in the remodel.
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, consider a request for annexation from Robert Ed, Mr. Property Located on George G. Pat Patterson Parkway. John?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Paul Watkins and let him discuss that for you.
I guess I could have just gone up to start with.
Thank you.
Think of that kind of introduction. Y'all should have a map of this area in your packets. We got a request from the property owner through their attorney to have this property voluntarily annexed. It's give or take 260-ish acres out on Pat Patterson Parkway. This is just south of the M Trade Park out there. This was some or all of this, I can't remember exactly what the, where the line was, was under consideration for inclusion at our last big annexation back in 2018, and ultimately, the decision was made to sort of pare down that area. So over there on the west side, there was a fairly thin strip of property that was annexed on that side of the new road. Property owner has asked us to consider annexation. They forwarded us the legal description of the property. As y'all know, the process that we would go through is y'all would need to adopt an ordinance to annex the property, go through our regular three-reading process, and we would have to file a petition for annexation in the Chancery Court, have a hearing set, give an opportunity for objectors, and go through the process of putting on the proof for why the annexation, inclusion of this property within the city would be reasonable. The discussions that I've had with the property owner's attorney are that they obviously understand how the process works, that my firm would handle the annexation itself, as we have the last few, and they would either pay us or reimburse the city for the cost, whatever the easiest way. We've done that in other fairly small, limited annexations before, so we can make that happen. So what we are bringing y'all tonight is, before we went through the process of bringing up an ordinance and formally moving forward with the project, we wanted to see if the board had any questions of anybody and what the general consensus was. If y'all give us the thumbs up, we'll go ahead and get the ordinance drafted, bring it to y'all at your next meeting for a first reading, and start moving forward with the process. Once we do that, we don't, I can't give you a 100% accurate estimate on about how long that process takes. We file it in court, we will need to go through the process of preparing city witnesses to appear in court, testify as to the reasonableness. We probably need an outside planner to give some expert testimony about that. The court would need time to consider that. Obviously, objectors would have a chance to come in. It would take a few more months past the time that y'all approved the resolution. I spoke to John Crawley briefly before we came in. I don't think there is an issue with the availability of utilities out on that side of town. And as I think y'all know, we've had several folks approach us, possibly some of y'all, about the possibility of annexations in various areas of the periphery where folks are looking at development. This is the first of those folks who have come to this point of formally asking for us to do that. So again, I wanted to give y'all a chance to ask any questions and just sort of give us guidance about how y'all want to handle the request.
Yeah, you answered my question. They will, they will have the calls. Calls will be on the owner to do that. Are there any questions for Paul?
Ben wanted me to point out to the front portion of that property, I guess what's going to be the eastern face of that property, is the sliver that is already within the city. So that, the part that actually touches the new parkway out there is part of the city limits. And while I'm thinking about, Ben, if y'all did go forward with the annexation, authorize us to do that, we don't, you don't have to zone it immediately. We haven't, there hasn't been a specific request made for what zoning district would be out there. What we typically do is the planning office will talk to the landowner like they do, anybody else who's got a request for zoning their property, and make a recommendation for initial zoning to be put in place within a fairly short period of time after the annexation is finished.
So if I understand right, when the annexation happened in 2018?
Yeah.
18?
Yeah.
This property as a whole was split in some manner? Is that what you're telling me?
Bottom row.
I just know that, you know, as part of conversations, we've looked at the front portion of this property, the same property.
Okay, it might be, it might be divided on a tax map or a survey, but it's the same on, the continuous on. Don't we have the housing accelerator legacy out there?
Right, next to it, isn't it?
Actually, this property that's in the city limits is actually in.
Yeah.
In the housing.
Okay.
So this is just to annex that piece of property, but we don't know what to do with it after that? So it's just to annex the property?
It'll be up to, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and that would be.
And they incur all costs.
An amendment to the zoning ordinance that y'all would consider like anything else. And yes, all the core costs associated with petition.
And they just want to be in city limits.
That's correct.
Utilities and.
Turns out it's easier to build if you have city utilities.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Any other questions?
Do we?
I mean, I think, I think we're all, I'm in favor of it.
Do you need a motion?
If y'all want to get a motion. I think you just need to authorize me to bring y'all the ordinance, that's fine, or you can just kind of nod at me, and I'll do that too.
I think we need a motion to authorize Paul to bring us the ordinance change.
Yeah, I agree. That'll be motion.
Okay, second?
Oh, second? You sound like you're seconding it, that's why I was.
I know, I know.
You can.
I can.
I know.
All right, motion is second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Request permission for the mayor to execute a contract for Fillmore Avenue, South 11th Street, Lincoln Avenue Drainage Improvement Project.
Yeah, so this is the project you voted to accept the little bid on at your last meeting. We have the contracts and the bonds, contractor's ready to go to work, we just need the mayor's, John Hancock.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission for the mayor to execute a contract for the Pumpkin Water System water plant demolition.
Same deal, you approved the low bid last time. We have two separate projects, the other one is coming up, but this is just to sign the contract to get them started.
A motion?
Submit.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, request permission to release subdivision bond number 11515321 for Heisen Hill Subdivision.
This is the extension of Cullen Road, Thencorwood, Cullen, that little cul-de-sac that goes up there. It had been a few years, but they finally put the final lift of asphalt on. It looks good. We've inspected it. We're ready to turn loose.
All right, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? All right, request permission to approve the mayor to execute task order number two for Neil Schaefer for elementary engineering design for upgrade to the Old Taylor Road, Chucky Mullins Shallow Intersection.
So what we're planning to do is install a traffic signal at Old Taylor Road, Chucky Mullins and Shallow, and that intersection, which is a mess right now, and improve Old Taylor Road north to the existing signalized intersection at Belk Drive. So it'd be a pretty big project, but hopefully, we're looking at relieving the congestion in that area.
When you say improvement, from the Chucky Mullins intersection to the existing light now, going toward campus?
So there will be some geometric changes in the intersection, turn lanes, things like that. Will probably eliminate the ability to turn left out of Whirlpool Drive, that existing county road there. So it might be three lanes all the way through there, maybe a boulevard type. We haven't settled on what we want it to look like, but it, the idea is to get traffic in and out of that area quickly, down to Highway 6.
And that's what Neil Schaefer's gonna do is design.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And they're gonna do signal timing and all that with the signal. Okay, yep. All right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? All right, request permission to approve the mayor to execute task order number 15A for Wagler Engineering for the improvements and upgrades to the Max Hip Industrial Park Sewer System.
So we've been informed by MDEQ that we can no longer discharge to the existing sewage lagoon in the industrial park as of November the 1st, 2027. So what that means is everything that is now going to that sewage lagoon, we have to reroute to a lift station and pump back down into town. There is an existing lift station there that already does that, but it will have to be upgraded, and the force man will have to be up-
upgraded, and the force main will have to be upgraded. How to collect all that other sewer that's already going to the lagoon, how we get it there, that's what we're asking Wagener to help us with. And so this task order really is just for about $10,000 for them to come in and give us an idea of what that project looks like, so we can come back with a more defined design project to talk with you guys about. But it needs to happen quickly, because November 2027 is only two years away. Yeah.
All right, a motion?
I, motion of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request, consider a request for the asphalt stamping contract to work on Sunday, October 19th and October 26th for the crosswalks around the square.
So all the crosswalks around the square, up and down Lamar, Van Buren, Tyler, we're going to stamp and paint like the ones you already see on East Jackson, we did as part of the Streetscape project. He's gonna come in Friday, October the 17th, I think, and get started. We know that he'll need to work that Sunday, and he might need to work the following Sunday to avoid the majority of the traffic. We'll have to shut some lanes down and direct traffic around the square, it'll get a little hanky, but we need to be able to work on those weekends to avoid school traffic and commuter traffic if we can.
All right, a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. Request permission to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for the Pumpkin Water System well abandonment project.
This is just the other pumpkin project that we need to get the mayor to sign so we can get them loose.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. I will ask the board to consider an executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Thank you. The board is now considering.